I'd like to welcome everybody to the special town council meeting Tuesday, January 16th, 2024, 7:00 PM. McKinney Council Chambers, agenda item number one, call to order. Number two, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to agenda item number three, roll call. Madam Secretary.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Chenier.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Montagney.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
Counselor Rivas.
We have a quorum. Moving on to agenda item number four, citizens forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the council? If not, moving on to agenda item number five, presentation, curbside collection enterprise fund program. Town manager.
Thank you. I'm going to go to the podium. Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the council. Tonight, we're here. As you see, this slide says solid waste and disposal enterprise fund. My new right-hand man, Dean Yakbuchi, is also here with me this evening. He was instrumental, along with several others in the department, Anna Smith, Director of Public Health, Maritza, all working together as a team. Francine in the Assessors Office, Jasmine, in trying to get this rate set and to get the most reliable information so that we can set a rate as the town council. Again, the name of the, in conversations with Dean today, rather than call it the curbside enterprise fund, it really is solid waste and disposal enterprise fund, based on the language that was given to us. What is an enterprise fund? Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F and a half, provides for municipalities to establish, for accounting purposes, a separate fund or funds classified as enterprise funds to record the revenues and expenditures of municipal operations that deliver services on a business-like basis. That is, the uses of the service, charge fees, intended to cover most, if not all, of the cost of delivering the service. This solid waste and disposal enterprise fund would be similar to what we now have in the water and sewer enterprise accounts that we currently have. As a town, we could adopt to account for the revenues and expenditures of the solid waste program in the general funds. However, the advantages of accounting for an enterprise fund are as follows. One, to provide a mechanism to clearly identify the total cost of the solid waste program, the direct, indirect, and any capital cost, and the sources of funding of the service. Secondly, it would make readily accessible important financial and management information for the rate-setting purposes and financial reporting. It would also provide a mechanism for the segregation of interest income from the investment of cash generated by the solid waste program, and also provide a mechanism for the segregation of any surplus at fiscal end, year-end, that is generated by the solid waste program, and to reserve that surplus for any future use in support of the operation, subject, of course, to the appropriation by the town council. What are some of the costs that can be captured in a fee? The fee is a function of both direct and indirect cost of a solid waste program. Direct costs will be those costs incurred to provide the service to program subscribers, i.e., town residents, and the indirect costs, which are costs incurred in the general fund in support of the solid waste program. In addition, we may have some other costs which do not support the service, which do not support service provided to program subscribers, and therefore are candidates for funding from the general fund revenue. What are the direct costs that we've established? Those are the costs of the curbside collection and disposal of the solid waste and processing of recyclables.
Mr. Town Manager, do you think you could check and see if your mic is on? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I just think it might need to be turned up, but you're good, but...
Can you hear me?
Yeah. A little better.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
No, it's all good.
That's fine.
I'll make sure I go closer. I didn't have my hand in front, though, like you asked me not to do, so I was careful on that. Indirect costs. There are indirect costs that support services to the program subscribers. Some of the, what is part of those indirect costs? They include, but are not limited to, the following. Portions of salaries of staff responsible for generating bills to subscribers, a portion of the annual maintenance fee of billing software used, a portion of the cost of operating the town accountant's office, a portion of the cost of operating the treasure collector's office, a portion of salary of staff with responsibility of overseeing the management of the solid waste program, i.e., the Director of Public Health, also some cost to staff and manager hazardous waste events unless we determine that it's a non-fee-based course, cost. We do see those direct and indirect costs currently in the rates for water and sewer, and it's proportional to those in the office and the work that they do. So how would we calculate the flat trash fee? That was the recommendation of the council, was a flat trash rate. So the flat trash rate is a function of the total cost to be financed with the fee and the total subscribers. So the fee equals the total subscriber-based cost divided by total subscribers. In conversations with Mass Department of Environmental Protection Municipal Assistant Coordinator, they learned that in their experience, when communities transition from a non-trash fee-funded program to a trash fee-funded program, household participation may drop as low as 90% of the total households. So consequently, what the Collins Center did is they took all the data that we had and assumed what the cost of 100% participation would be, but based the trash fee on 90% participation. That would give us some room in case those participation rates changed. We also looked at an option to consider and characterize the yard waste drop-off that's currently on Gulfwood Road, operational at the DPW facility, and the household hazardous waste cost as subscriber costs rather than non-subscriber costs. If they were non-subscriber costs, it would be part of a general fund of which our budget at this point wouldn't be able to support. We could do this as a matter of policy, and the town could limit the participation in those programs to subscribers, or charge a separate fee to non-subscribers who wish to participate in either program. Potential subscribers may see this as a benefit that could result in a positive effect on the rate of participation, including these costs as subscriber-based, and it would increase the FY '25 subscriber cost by $310,945, and a quarterly fee by $14. Our conversations regarding the Gulfwood Street, Gulfwood Road location, when it comes to the drop-off of the yard waste, we would look to a different concept to make sure that we manage it properly so that it's not a free-for-all, that anybody from out of town would be able to drop off their yard waste at that facility, and we've had conversations with the DPW Director regarding that matter and moving the containers into the facility So in the packet, you'll see what the program cost estimates are, and this was based on the contract that was signed by the town council, well, ratified by the town council, negotiated by former interim town manager Charlie Blanchard. For the fiscal year 2025, you have curbside solid waste recycling, just the cost to pick up solid waste and recycling at $1,015,73. The solid waste disposal at $576,150, and the recyclable processing at $162,890. Those numbers, and I gave you the backup data from the Collins Center, were actual figures that were given to the Collins Center through the current Department of Public Health and Anna Smith as to the tonnage that was generated by the town of Southbridge in fiscal year '22. So they went off of the tonnage that would be generated at the per-ton cost to dispose of it at 100%. So that would be 100% participation, that would be the cost for the trash and recyclables. The next one down is yard waste collection and yard waste processing. Those two numbers reflect the cost of the current six-week periods, two times a year, where residents can leave their leaves in bags at the curbside, and those would be picked up by the subscriber as it currently is. There is a number in here for cart replacement. That is a cost to maintain a number of carts in our inventory. And then you can see there's two sides to the FY '25. The basic service for yard waste drop-off that does not have a cost, and the hazardous household waste that also does not have a cost. And on the next side, you would see the number as it includes those two options. The hazardous household waste would be done twice a year, each event costing approximately That then gives us the subtotal for the solid waste and recycling pickup in our community on both ends, sides of that ledger for FY '25. Now, I mentioned earlier that you would have direct costs, which would be employees. We do not have the staff currently to manage a program such as this, so therefore, in this budget, in this fund, we would have a full-time town agent that would be working directly through the Department of Public Health, or Director of Public Health, to manage the program on a daily basis. Also, we would want to make sure that we have an individual that would go to the Casella drop-off to make sure that the tonnages that are being reported are accurate, that the recycling that's going through that facility is accurate, so that we have an accounting and verification of what we are disposing of on a annual basis. So that would be the salary. That is the current step that Anna Smith is at as the solid waste agent, so we kept it at the same step at a full-time rate. And then the cost of benefits, we put in here as a direct cost. Currently, we have a part-time solid waste monitor, inspector, that is out there verifying pickups, and in conversations with the department, at least for the first year, because we know there's going to be a lot of transition, to hire at least two more part-time monitor solid waste that would go on and do the enforcement as far as trash collection, and making sure the right individuals are leaving the correct materials at the street side. Additionally, my thought process on this is we could also use those part-time inspectors or monitors. If we were to have the yard waste drop-off, we would want somebody to monitor that, so we could use those inspectors, and possibly some senior workers if they so choose. So there's the cost of that within the direct cost of the program. Uniforms, we estimated four employees, approximately $5,000. Mailing, billing, that would be to issue our bills and send them out, similar to what we do with water sewer now through Kelly and Ryan. That cost was actual, taking the number of bills that we would generate per year, at the cost that we currently pay Kelly and Ryan to send out that billing through the Assessors Office. Then, I think I've mentioned in a couple meetings, we are looking at utility billing software to manage this program outside of Munis. That would be the annual cost, maintenance cost for that software program. That would just be the portion that would be directed to curbside, with remaining later on down the line to the water and sewer departments on the add-on for that utility billing. So that gives us a direct cost on a basic service of $2,198,900,000, or if we include the yard and hazardous waste of $2,509,845. I did mention earlier that we can charge indirect costs into the program. We did a conservative 5% estimate on that. Again, that is for all the cost of employees within the town hall that have to actually touch those different bills at different points, or the accounting, legal, anything that's an indirect cost at 5%, which is a reasonable cost estimate. So it puts us for total subscriber cost at, with the basic service, again, with no yard waste drop-off or hazardous waste, at $2,308,845. Again, that would be the cost at 100% participation, and then with those two additional benefits to our residents, at $2,635,337. So how does that break out? Our Assessors Office, Town Manager's Office, Inspections Department have been working to determine how many households there are, based on single-family residents, duplex two families, three families, four families, and six families, because the program would go up to six family as per our regulations. One of the caveats on the six families, if there's two six families on one parcel, they are not part of this program, they were not part of the previous program, and Anna has actually done a audit of those particular parcels and found out of, I think there was 10, three hadtoaters that they will make sure that they're removed, and the rest did have their dumpsters as required by our regulations. So based on all the information that was fed into Callings, the review by Dean, myself, and our office, it comes out to the quarterly rate at a 90% participation. So for all the residents that we have, all the parcels of single through six family, we estimate that there's 6,376 potential subscribers to the program. Subscribers would mean units. Single family is one unit, two families, two units, et cetera. So there would be 6,376 units to participate in the program. A 90% participation rate would put it at 5,738 units that would subscribe potentially, hopefully, to our program. That would then relate to, in fiscal year '25, if we, if the council so chooses to just do a basic service, at $101, rounded up, and at the yard and household waste at $115 per quarter. Those are quarterly prices. Again, based on the analysis of all the data available, the Collins Center recommends, and we agree, based on our evaluation of all the documentation, that we recommend that the flat subscriber fee be set using the 90% participation rate, rounded to the nearest dollar. This would result in a quarterly rate for a single-family home of $101 or $115, dependent on the level of service the town council wishes to offer to our residents. The next chart, Dean did up, and that basically breaks down what those costs would be from a single family all the way up to a six family, per quarter. As you can see, it's per unit, so while the six family is 606 per quarter, you've got to remember that's six specific units that they would be billed for. When would billing begin? Right now, based on our work with our utility building, again, Steve Gregwell's here tonight from the Water Department, and he's working closely with us on the utility billing, because there's a bigger concept with water sewer and curbside and potentially stormwater. Our goal with our request for proposals that are out, that we would be able to generate the first bill, and it has to be generated, for April of 2024. That first bill would cover the expenses associated with the solid waste collection period between April 1st, 2024, when the current contract ends, until June 30th, 2024, the end of fiscal year '24. Those funds would be deposited into the general fund. Why the general fund? Because of the timing of the proposals that came to council, the ratification of the Casella agreement, we would have needed to set up this enterprise fund and appropriated money prior to the setting of the tax rate to have an enterprise fund set up for this year. Because of those challenges, we are now going to be looking at our budgets and our different accounts, where we'll make a recommendation to council to appropriate money from either a stabilization account, free cash if it's certified, to fund the fourth quarter of FY '24, because it wasn't budgeted at the beginning of the fiscal year. So we would allocate that money, or appropriate that money out of those, whatever funds we indicate, the funds we generate for this fourth quarter, we go back to the general fund, and we close out to free cash. Beginning in FY '25, billing will occur during the fiscal year on a quarterly billing cycle as follows. July, which would cover the July through September, October covers October through December, January, and April. Those funds that we receive from those billing cycles in fiscal year '25 would then be deposited into the solid waste and disposal enterprise fund going forward. So tonight, we're requesting two motions. One motion, the first motion, would be vote that the town of Southbridge accept the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53F, one and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws, establishing a solid waste collection and disposal as an enterprise fund effective fiscal year 2025. And a second motion would be vote to set a flat per-unit subscriber fee rate at, and again, it would be up to the council's purview, of either the $101 per quarter to be billed quarterly, or the $115 to be billed quarterly, effective April 1st, 2024, for the curbside collection and disposal of residential, municipal, and solid waste and recyclables and other related costs. So with that, I'll answer any questions, and do my best to answer them.
Any questions, Ray Council? Counselor Montagney?
Thank you very much. Thanks, Jack, for all the information. That's great. So when we vote tonight, we have to set the exact fee?
Yes.
Like, but we don't know exactly how many people are going to opt in and opt out yet at this point? I know you're saying 90% is the recommendation, but what if 95 come in?
If 95% come in, then that surplus would be retained earnings, such as we do in water and sewer.
Okay.
So there'd be retained earnings, which would allow us a couple of options. One, to keep the rate stable over a longer period of time when you have surpluses and those retained earnings, or if the council decides, and we've talked about this, about setting a transfer station or trying to go down those roads with those retained earnings, we may have options to do certain different things within our solid and waste recycling program.
Okay, thank you. So what if it comes in, and we got 85%, and we don't have enough?
We have to hope that we come in at 90.
Uh huh.
You know, we would adjust the rates. We would have to come back and adjust the rates and say we need a higher rate. So, but quite honestly, in all the conversations that I've had with individuals and through personal experience, there is nobody that is going to beat our rate on either, on either one.
Yeah, my research is the same.
I mean, I know in conversations with our good friend, John LaFlesch, he lives in Sturbridge, he pays now approximately $162 per quarter. He gets it bi-weekly pickup.
Wow.
My in-laws' house in Charlton, on a quarterly basis, is $162, with no curbside leaf pickup, with no hazardous waste opportunities and the like. And speaking on the hazardous waste as well, we've had conversations, I have had conversations with Jimmy Philbrook over in Charlton, with the Director of Public Health, I guess he is over there, about they lost their transfer station and their hazardous waste pickup, so we may look at trying a regional approach to certain ideals, and maybe we can get some grants. But we need to establish this rate, we need to establish this program, and that is our recommended rates.
Understood. Thank you. So when you said the thing about April, May, and June, and not having the account yet until the 1st of July, I believe I'm wrong to say that the town is picking up the bill for all the residents for April, May, and June. You're still billing them, or are we paying through the budget?
No, we will bill them, and it's going to go back to the general fund, though.
Okay.
So we have to take money out of our existing funds.
Yeah.
To fund the fourth quarter, but the revenue that we generate back in would close out to the general fund, not to the enterprise fund, effective July 1. It would then go through the, so the motion, and it's in your packet with the Collins Center, there'll be further motions later in the year as to the appropriation of X number of dollars to fund the curbs, the solid waste recycling, to be funded by general, either portion by general fund or the enterprise fund.
Okay, no, thank you for clarifying that. You know, I'm inclined to support keeping things the way that they were for residents, and it's nice that you have all the other things pieced out. But the last question, I think bulk pickup wasn't mentioned at all tonight.
Bulk pickup, residents will have the opportunity for bulk pickup, they're going to have to pay per item, and that will all be handled by Casella, not by us.
Okay.
So they'll go online, they'll have a drop-down box, it'll tell them how much it's going to cost per item, and they would pay per item through Casella.
Well, at least it's still available.
It would be available, yes.
Okay.
And that's why the opportunity to perhaps set a transfer station at some other date that we could have those kind of bulk pickups possibly, would be a benefit to our residents at some point.
Right, okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Chenier?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Town Manager, if I understood correctly, the first round of billing, the funds that come in from that first round of billing goes into the general fund?
Correct.
From there, appropriation has to be made to pay the bill to the trash hauler?
Well, I'm going to reverse it. We're going to make an appropriation first to make sure we have the money to pay the bill, but the money would then close out to the general fund.
Okay, at the end of the first round of billing, then you're going to go into the enterprise fund, and the funds are going to go into that account and be maintained like the water and sewer?
Correct.
So for the first round of billing, if there is a surplus in the funds from the collections, that goes to the general fund?
Correct.
So if council wanted to take that surplus and revert it back to the trash fund, say, to give them a plus balance, they could do that as a vote as a council, am I correct?
I would, I would, we'd have to look into that, because it would close out to free cash, and the council could do whatever they want with it out of free cash and appropriate to, say, capital for the trash fund, but we'd have to take a look at where that money, surplus money could go.
So council would have an option of that surplus funds to be utilized, instead of just staying in the general fund and going to free cash, they could reallocate that fund, say, to a transfer station startup?
That could be possible. I'll let Dean answer it, because he's my financial expert.
Georgia, it would have to close out to free cash first before the council can appropriate it. So once it closed out and free cash was certified, then the council could vote a transfer like you're speaking of.
Okay.
It's just, it's not available to you until it's closed out to free cash, and then the state has certified it as available free cash.
Okay. Now, my other question is, if you travel through the town, the community, and you see the single-family homes and the multiple-family homes, it appears single-family homes and the multiple-family homes, it appears that the multiple-family homes have an abundance of trash with the toters that they use. Water and sewer has a percentage increase as you use the size of the diameter of the pipe. So you go, uses fee, so my concern is, is that, do we have the ability to establish a add-on fee to each level of the multiple-family homes? Like say, let's say, starting from a three-family, four-family, 530 to add a potential 5% increase, say? I'm just using that number to, for, because of the overabundance of trash that accumulated at these multiple families?
That's something we'd have to look at. I don't have that prepared answer right now. However, the reason why we have three inspectors in this is for the enforcement portion that, you know, our regulations that are regulated by the board of health say what size toter you'll have, how much trash you're supposed to generate per that, and that would be the citation methods through the inspectors and the director of public health.
Because we have that ability now to have the trash police go and inspect the sites and we've kind of failed on that end of it.
Right. With this program, I think the re, again, we have to look at this as a whole new model.
Okay.
Right? The whole new model is when we pay, when nobody pays anything for trash, which we really have been spoiled for a number of years, it's free rein, right? Trash goes out, nobody really pays attention. Now, we really have to be cognizant of how much trash we're picking up. Are we picking up at the right residence? Right? Are you subscribing? Are you picking up at the right residence? There's tracking of the toters, how much trash are you generating? So that's why, one, you need the full-time solid waste agent to run the program and the additional inspectors to make enforcement. And I've already had conversations with the director of public health and he's been in touch with Attorney Caprera to talk about our ability to do bylaw violations through chapter 40, 21D. So we're working on that as well.
Okay, that goes to my next question, it'll be kind of my last question. The 21E, I think.
21D.
21D tickets.
Yes.
That would be issued. They go to the general fund. Will the 21D tickets go to the trash fund that are?
Well, I think that would have to be a conversation that we would have with the director of public health and make sure that legally we could do that because I do know in my conversations with our building commissioner, Teddy Tetro, when he cites people for violations in the town of Webster on the 21Ds, he has that going into a blighted building fund and that's how he, he said that he funds tearing down some buildings by the citation methods that they do. So that's something we should take a look at.
You'll look at that sooner than later because we're going to, I believe, the first year having an abundance of violations and I would hope that we are lenient in the first few months with the people and then enforcement.
So we're working a multiple of fronts on different issues when it comes to the curbside and the first step is to get the rate, but we do have the director of public health working on the enforcement with the, with the board of health. We have the different pieces in place. We have a bunch of moving targets that we're doing to get this program up and running.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Marketti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So the, first of all, the issue of trash laying around, that's covered in the CASILA contract that I read today. They're not to be picking up any trash that's not inside the toter. So they're really in charge of enforcement of situations like that. Now, the yard and hazard, the yard waste, leaf and yard waste that you're talking about that would add to this, that's for the DPW facility, right? That's not pickup at the?
Correct.
Right, so that's a separate from the curbside leaf and pickup. Now, if we had a regional transfer station for leaves and yard waste, could we recoup that money from?
From a regional approach?
Yeah, a regional approach.
I'm sure we could or reduce, at least keep the rate stable and not go up on rates.
Okay. And then the hazardous waste day, does anybody have a number of how many people use that? Because I have gone up there and initially there is a line of cars, but as the morning goes on, there's hardly anybody there. So is it worth it to us to pay for that if no one's going to use that in Southbridge? And I don't know, maybe they do. I just was wondering, does anybody have those numbers and who uses it?
So I did have this conversation, I did have the same conversation with Mr. Philbrook in Charlton because they're, they're up against the same issue. And the conversation came back that if we don't offer it, what are people going to do with this hazardous waste? So it's better for us to at least put it in the program to begin with and then if we have to cut back later on, cut back. But they, my conversations with them and Anna said both were that individuals do use it. Yes, you may have the initial rush that people want to get rid of it, but the other option is what are they going to do with it if we don't offer this option?
Well, doesn't CASILA still offer a hazardous waste day, only they charge you?
No.
They are not going to offer any?
No.
I thought, I thought early on the conversation is that they were going to continue it, but it wasn't going to be free anymore.
No.
All right.
If we want the day, it's $42,000. And that's why we're looking to work with Charlton to say, hey, if you want to come on, we split the cost or look to the regional approaches.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion, councilors? Counselor Revis?
I just have one question. So the billing and the citation goes to the homeowner or the rent terms?
The homeowner. Yeah. Everything would be homeowner-based. Because we don't want to get into position of the tenant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, for the brief and it's good to see that when we started this back in 2000, what, 19, a lot of the numbers almost remain the same from what the prediction was. And then when, when Counselor Marketti took over the curbside again, it looks like a lot of the numbers remain the same, about the 10% and we even talked about 20%. I'm glad you brought up the fact that the board of health may have to take a look at some of these bylaws and we've been discussing this for a couple of years now, so I'm glad you brought that up. The one question I do have is, I looked at your, you've got the part-timers and I understand that, but the illegal dumping issue, and you may have brought this up, I just didn't hear it. But the illegal dumping, we, one of the things that we did recommend in there was to hire on a couple of part-timers for the DPW or to give them a, somebody F450 so they could drive around twice a week and take a look at the town. Is that into consideration? I know you have the oversight individuals for the proper taking of it, but the illegal dumping, that's going to be placed on public property and we know that's a trend that we have even with free curbside.
So that was not part of, of the cost. However, we do have the built-in indirect costs, so if there's a portion of DPW that has to be charged off, at this point, we would put it to the indirect cost.
And I appreciate it, though my only concern is they're shorthanded as it is and then they're called every day by the board of health saying, you know.
So with the hope, that's why we're having, going up to three inspectors, monitors type of thing. So we, we can, once we develop those job descriptions for the remaining two or even look at the existing job description, take a look at what their job functions are going to be. So that's why we have the three part-timers and beefed up additional help there.
Thank you, sir.
The one caveat that you do not see that will have to be funded from the general fund is the municipal building cost that when we come to council and say, hey, our budget's going up, or different departments, that is going to be a cost that's going to be passed on that they're going to have to absorb within each individual light item.
And we predicted that too as well, same thing. But it was at $200,000, not 165, thank you.
Any other discussion by town council? Yeah, no. Go ahead, Counselor Dow.
What's the difference between 101 and 115? Like this, I don't know the difference if we walk on the 115.
So the 115 would include two hazardous waste days that individuals can go dispose of their hazardous waste. Whatever they, we currently pick up, the paints, the TVs, just like it is now, we would have the cost. And then the other one is to the box that we have at Gulfwood that people can just go jump off leaf and trees or branches and all that, that would be part of the 115. But we would manage it differently where it's not open, where you have who knows who from whatever town comes in and dumps it up. Because you have to remember, now, again, we don't really look at that cost because it's part of CASILA, they've always been doing. When we have to pay $30 per yard to dispose of it and process it, that's when we have to make sure that we're managing our programs.
Now, when you say TV, they have to pay the fee?
Just like they do now, yes.
So, okay. Thank you. How about the mattress?
Same. Well, I don't know if they pick up mattresses, if they do.
It would be in the bulk, I thought.
Yeah.
Have to pay for that. Counselor Shinya?
Just one more question, Town Manager. People do have the ability to opt out of this, correct?
Right, this will be an opt-out program and the council had, however, they're going to have to be able to document where they're doing their trash or where it's going to go and who their hauler is going to be. And again, because of our rate, we've already done a survey of all the surrounding vendors and there wasn't a vendor that will service Southbridge. Or the one local one said that they wouldn't be able to even come close to our rate. So we know with our rate and the competition, unfortunately, we'll be the one that be able to offer the services as they are now at a very competitive price. And the council had voted to go ahead with the OpenGov platform for permanent software and we're already working on that right now. Matt in my office is working on that and hopefully we'll have that live pretty soon where individuals, if they do opt out, will have the ability to go in and document it, but it'll be drop-down boxes, where are you going? What's your address? And again, that's tied into the mapping of the different locations in town and parcels, that's the benefit of OpenGov. The other caveat to that too is I'm having Matt look at, we're going to have to capture the toter numbers for every individual that has toters. So there's a lot of work ahead of us on the town hall side. We have to capture the toter numbers on trash and recycling because once CASILA gets to the camera-operated automated pickup trucks, which are on order right now, they're just going to go and scan and if that scanner doesn't pick up that number, they're not picking up your trash. And all those trucks have cameras on them, so they'll be able to document if somebody calls up and says, hey, I pay, but you didn't pick up my trash, they're able to go right to that camera, right to that truck and verify right there that, well, yeah, we went by your house, but you're not on the list to pick up. So it's a very automated, complex system. It's going to take a lot of work on our end as well. So it is quite the endeavor. So this is just one small step in a big, big project.
Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Chair, through you. One more, one more question. When you have out, you have to have a proof where your trash going, correct?
Correct.
But I think, I'm not sure, the law say you can't transfer your own trash somewhere else, have to have it on the side, some hauler come pick it up?
I would defer that question to the director of public health on that one.
Just to make sure because I'm sure, you know, a lot of people are going to think, grab the trash and walk with it somewhere else. I mean, okay, thank you.
Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. First off, I just want to thank Counselors Adams and Marketti for the work that they did prior to the town manager picking up the ball with his team and running with it and putting together this fine presentation and really answering questions that people have had for years at this point in terms of what we're going to do and how are we going to do it. So I really appreciate a fine presentation tonight, well-done, well-documented. Thank you very much as far as that goes. I'd just like to say that I appreciate the fact that you also included the yard waste and the hazardous waste. To echo your previous statement and statements from people that you've spoken with, my concern has always been in terms of hazardous waste, where's it going to go? We're concerned, as Counselor Adams said previously, about dumping and we're talking dumping regular items, for lack of a better term. Where's the motor oil going to go? Where are the batteries going to go? Where, where are the fluorescent tubes going to go? That really needs to be taken care of. We want, we want our town to look good, we want our town to stand above other towns in terms of how we take care of the environment. We want to protect our water sources. I really think and I urge the council to strongly consider the, the $115 rate when it comes time to vote at item number seven, to include hazardous waste and yard waste collection. Thank you.
Any discussion by any of our councilors? Just a quick comment, a lot of people thought we couldn't get the job done. I know they started in, back in November of '22 and with all the issues the council deals with, they kept saying, don't kick that down the road, don't kick that can down the road. And I took the Counselor Daniels' point, the committee, Counselor Adams, Counselor Marketti, it's arriving. But at the same time, we have to keep into consideration, the town manager says, this is the tip of the iceberg, there's a lot of work going forward. And I think that with that in mind, we'll continue to move in the right direction. But this is a crossroad on a basic decision at this point and there are so many other things to be worked on and voted on and we'll continue to get it to hit the schedule for '24. Thank you very much, Mr. Town Manager. Are there any citizens that would like to comment? State your name and address.
Kevin Buxton, 185 Everett Street. Actually, counsel, over the years, I've spoken out on the subject of trash and recycling quite a bit. Tonight, I'm not going to speak on it at all. I don't want to muddy the waters. I do have a lot of ideas of how we can improve the system, but for right now, you need to get these steps taken. And all I have to say is I hopefully look forward to helping the town with its trash and recycling issues in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to speak at this time? State your name and address.
Good evening. Roland Larishelbre, I would have. One question, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Manager, did you not state that tonight all of your councilors have the luxury to nail down price? So it's going to be either, let's take single-family to 101 or the 115?
Correct.
My question to this, because one of the, one of the concerns that everybody has is that people do not opt out. And you've already hit the point that you can't get anything for the buck that it's going to cost you here if you go outside and purchase. My question is, speaking for myself, I've taken advantage of the hazardous waste days that CASILA put on for free. I don't have anything left. I have electronics, but the town has electronic days. So I would, I know we're coming under the gun, but it might be a thought that if we go to the basic price, I don't use the leaves, I have enough property that I don't do the yard waste. But if people want to do it, how about an added fee that they come into the town hall and purchase a ticket or purchase some kind of a sticker when the hazardous waste day comes up? Or if they want to entertain anytime they want to dump their leaves, just like you'd get a, I don't know, a yearly thing to go use webs the like? That's one thing. The other question that I have, and it's probably too late now, it's $101 per a single-family house or per unit.
Per quarter.
And I'm sure there's a matrix that went into this, that one residential living unit consists of whatever it may be, two adults, two children, that's produced X amount of trash. Was there any concern about home-based businesses?
It's in the contract.
Which, you know, I have three adults in my family, but there's businesses that are run out of single-family residents, either permitted or not, but we won't get into that, hair salons, daycares, other kind of businesses that are now making money. But they're also producing more trash. And my thing is, is I am not against paying my fair share, by no means. But we all know we've been taken advantage of for a long time. And it's time to tighten up the bootstraps and let people pay for what, what they use. So Counselor Shinya used the thing, add-on fees. That was a good term in my book, that if somebody has that or, and this is also to look into a way of not only paying your own fair way, but you pay for it, it's costing us more per ton, so you pay your way. This is residential right now, but it was also brought to my attention to help out small businesses, whatever the caveat would be of how you declare a small business. Because if you've got somebody that is starting a business, things like that, it does cost you. you some coin for a dumpster. So, maybe there might be an add-on fee to help support this enterprise fund for a small business, but that would have to be, we'd have to adjust the solid waste bylaw, because right now, we're only talking about residents. But whether they get, okay, you're gonna get two toters for a small business, and you're gonna pay this much. But that might be other avenues to add some funding to this enterprise fund. I know we can't do anything now, but like an add-on fee for home business, you're making money, pay your share. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens? State your name and address.
Hi, um, Maureen Doyle, seven-seven-one Leventon Hill Road. Um, uh, leaves can be composted, so I'm trying to figure out why we're paying for this service. Doesn't the DPW collect leaves at their facility?
It's Town Manager?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The DPW collects the leaves, but we pay for it. Casella picks that up, and it's a cost. So, even though that, those containers are at the DPW facility, that is managed by Casella, not by the Department of Public Works.
Oh, I thought it was by DPW.
No, it's Casella.
Okay. I would really encourage people to, um, compost their leaves. It's really not that hard to do. Um, so, maybe we can get, um, a video or something together. Kevin, I'm looking at you. Um, thank you. Bye.
Are there any other, are there any other councilors that would like to speak at this time?
Just one. Thank you, Chair, through you. When you say 115, it's like thirty-eight dollars a month, it's three-quarter, correct? So, like, the Town Manager say, where are you gonna find, somebody pick up your trash at forty dollars a month? I mean, you can't beat that price, no brainer, think about it. It's not like, what I hear seems like people say 115 to pick up the trash, yeah, every three months, 115, not like every month. Thank you.
Council, uh, excuse me, Town Manager?
Uh, thank you. Um, you're right. I mean, the hardest thing on this whole concept is that, um, as a taxpayer myself, it's a brand-new fee, another fee that we all have to pay. We've been very fortunate not to have to pay this, so that's why we work very hard to make sure that we encapsulate as much cost to keep the price as reasonable as possible for all the subscribers. So, so I get it. To some people, 115 is, is a lot of money into a, into a budget. For others, it's not. So, that's why we've worked very, very hard to make sure that we get this the best price that we possibly can, but also to make sure that we generate enough revenue to pay for that service. So, that's, that's where we're at today.
Any other, Council Montigny?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to thank the Town Manager and the, all the team involved with this. Um, I want to put into perspective for citizens that our Town Manager just explained to us how surrounding towns pay almost fifty dollars more a quarter, um, and they have less services than the hundred-and-fifteen dollars that we're offering. So, I mean, the voters came out about six, seven years ago and asked to shut the landfill down, and I think that this council and this finance team has done a grand slam in offering the citizens exactly what they wanted, the same trash, not in their own landfill, at a rate that can't be beat anywhere. Uh, you can't beat this rate in any town in central Mass, I'm sure, because he just said that there's not even private people that can come close, it's not even worth mentioning the numbers. I mean, I won't say which one, but of, of resident called one in town, and it was five-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars for, uh, the year. I mean, uh, so, I just, uh, I would encourage citizens to remember that this is, uh, they did not want a landfill anymore, didn't want to be in the trash business, and this is a super-low price, and there's a, again, this is the smallest, the first step to a large process. It, it's a, an ask from, from you that we are taking care of, and I think that everybody's done a great job, and I'm, I'm really happy to see, uh, this presentation in front of me. I think everyone did a great job. Thank you.
Council Marketti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First of all, I just want to address, uh, Mr. Larishell's comment about home, small businesses. In the Casella contract, uh, Mr. Town Manager, I believe that small home businesses are allowed to opt into this program, and the advantage to that would be the more people that opt in, the, the lower we can keep the cost for all. So, I, I believe it is in there in the Casella contract that I read today. Uh, the other thing is, I just wanted to comment, uh, the residents of Southbridge did not ask to close the landfill. Casella put a petition on the ballot, they wanted to expand the landfill, and we said no. So, thank you.
Any other discussion by any other councilors? If not, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six. Vote that the town of Southbridge accept the provisions of Chapter Forty-four, Fifty-three, F and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws establishing solid waste collection and disposal as an enterprise fund effective fiscal year two thousand twenty-five.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
An emotion by Council Shinya, seconded by my Council Ortiz. Discussion. If no discussion, roll call.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Shania?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Rebus?
Yes.
Unanimous. Agenda Item Number Seven, what I'm gonna do, councilors, I'm gonna read it with the blank line, and then after, you can amend the number into the motion. We'll vote on the amendment and the main motion as amended. So, vote to set a flat-rate unit subscriber fee rate at zero to be billed quarterly effective April one, two thousand twenty-four for the curbside collection and disposal of residential, municipal, and solid waste and recyclables and other related costs. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shania. Council Daniels?
Mr. Chair, I wish to amend the amount, strike the word zero, and add in the word one-hundred-and-fifteen dollars.
Seconded.
Seconded by Montigny. We have a motion on, an amendment on the floor for a hundred-and-fifteen dollars. Discussion on the 115. If there is no discussion, go to a vote, roll call.
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Shania?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Rebus?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes. We'll vote on the main motion as amended. Any discussion? If not, roll call.
Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Shania?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Um, Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Rebus?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
No.
I'm sorry. Counselor Lazo?